Good evening. I'd like to call the special meeting of the Dare County Board of Education to order. Today is Wednesday, July tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We're meeting at First Flight High School, and the time is five oh-two. The purpose of this meeting this evening is to provide information about the Dare County Schools' early college, and to hear comments and receive information from the public. With that being said, I'd like to welcome our guests tonight, the Commissioners of the Dare County. We appreciate you all coming here tonight, being with us with this public hearing. Mr. Couch is unable to be with us tonight. He has had a previous engagement. He's on the board for the Graveyard Atlantic meeting. Tonight, we have two of our board members who are not able to meet with us either tonight with the Board of Education. Ms. Balance, she had a previous engagement out of town, and Mr. Wicker had a doctor's appointment unassuddenly for his tooth. He had a cracked tooth, so he had an emergency procedure done this evening. So thank you all again for coming here tonight, and I'd like to thank the community of Dare County for showing up for this public hearing. Next, I need a request for a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend the agenda and add, under item number five, Superintendent's closing remarks, board member remarks.
So we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Payne to amend the agenda to add board remarks to item number five with Superintendent closing remarks. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Mauer. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any nays? Motion carries, so we have amended the agenda. So now, with that being said, do we have approval for the amended agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the amended agenda.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Payne. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Bothwell. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any nays? Motion carries, so we have an agenda. Oh, Mr. Couch, welcome. Now, we'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Bassnight, and what the two boards will do from here, we will step down and sit in the audience in the front row to watch Mr. Bassnight's presentation. Once the presentation is being received, we'll come back up here for the rest of our meeting. Okay? Mr. Bassnight?
Thank you, sir.
Probably easy is just to go down the stairs on your side.
Good evening. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I want to thank you for being here. I want to thank you for sharing your thoughts, and I want to thank you for listening. And I want to start off by saying this. I've heard the word "passion" thrown around a little bit, and I'll own it. I am passionate about this. I'm passionate about educating kids. I'm passionate about all kids. I'm passionate about kids that have a voice, and I'm passionate about kids that don't have a voice. And I have to be the voice for all of them. And so I will do my best not to let the passion take over, but I can't promise, because this matters to me. And I want to start by saying this. I believe in this. I believe in the power of an early college. I've been there. I've seen it. I know the effect that it has on students. I know the effect that it has on parents. If I didn't believe that, I'm not a program person. I don't believe in going out and buying a program and bringing it in and waiting for it to do what it's supposed to do. To me, that's not education. That's canned goods. I believe in teaching and learning, and I believe in doing everything in our power for kids. So that's where I want to start with my topic tonight. Some of this information some of you may have seen before. I've got a lot of new faces in here tonight, so I'm thrilled I'm going to get to share this with everybody. There's a lot of new information in here, and I've tried to respond to anything that anybody brought up as rumor, possibility, so I could provide you with the facts. My clicker goes a little bit slower than the... Maybe? I got another one. Hold on. Okay. These are our strategic goals. And I say that because I want you to understand that everything we do runs through these goals. Somewhere, everything we talk about is on this list. Increasing student learning and doing. It's not just about going to college. It's about providing the basis for an occupation. And I'll say this. It's about providing a basis for an occupation for graduates from Dare County Schools in Dare County. That's important. We want our kids to graduate and come home and find a job on the Outer Banks that they can live and work at, and make a good living and raise a family. So let's talk about the evolution of misinformation, okay? These are some of the things over the last four months that I have been told about early college. And in the event you can't see this, let me run through some of these, because I'm going to go left to right. One, you're going to take all the smart kids out of our schools. No, that's not how this works, okay? Then let's go to the opposite end. You're going to bus and segregate minority students. No, that's not how this works. Why does First Flight High School get seven million dollars for an auxiliary gym? They get everything. Manio gets nothing. Now, we need to spend seven million dollars to build an auxiliary gym at First Flight High School. We're not worried about Cape Hatters, because they're a long ways away. We should build a cafeteria in Cape Hatters, because it's unsanitary. You're going to move teachers. No, you're not going to be able to find teachers. Let me tell you that. I've got at least a half dozen people waiting for us to post jobs for early college now, who live here. Students won't be able to participate in athletics. Yeah, well, if they are, it'll change our conference designation. No. You can already get an associate's degree through dual enrollment. Very few early college students get associate's degrees. You're going to eliminate AP classes. You're going to eliminate elective courses. You're going to close Manio High School and move all the students to First Flight High School. This issue has been fast-tracked and pushed through without anyone's knowledge. You should spend the money to pay teachers. Okay? That's just in the last three to four months. Those are all the things that people have been told and who have turned around and shared them as being the gospel truth. None of those are true. So what is an early college? Okay, my computer changed in the area. An early college is a public school. It's not a private school. It's not a charter school. It's a public school. It's referred to by the Department of Public Instruction as a cooperative innovative high school. And these are some of the things it does, and we're going to talk a little bit more about how it does those things. Overall, smaller environment, and it's a college-going culture with a focus on two areas. One, and this word will come back again, completion of an associate degree or completion of a career certification. It's not about taking a few college classes, okay? It's about getting, if you don't get there, you get close. Cooperative innovative high school students, in twenty-two, twenty-three, in the state of North Carolina, eighty-seven percent of cooperative innovative high school students at community colleges average a passing grade of C or better. You have to get a C, a B, or an A for it to transfer. If you get a D, you have to retake the class. So C is the cutoff. That's good. In Dare County, our kids that are duly enrolled actually exceed that. Our success rate in Dare County is eighty-eight point three percent this year. That's fantastic. Here's the problem. Seventy-seven percent of North Carolina's six thousand two hundred and ten cooperative innovative high school graduates received an associate degree or career certification. In Dare County, that's thirteen out of three hundred and twenty-eight, or four percent. And that's a record. I know a lot of you are tired to hear me say this, so I'm going to go quick. There are one hundred counties in North Carolina. Eighty-two of them have an early college. There are one hundred and seventeen school districts in North Carolina. One hundred of them have an early college. There are one hundred and thirty-four early colleges in North Carolina alone. Some counties have multiple early colleges. And a lot of them are totally different. Our early college, our design and our plan is not like anyone else's. Our goal through all this, and we'll go back to it again, is to create opportunity for students. That was the bottom line, and anything we saw as a barrier to student opportunity, we tried to remove. Anything that made it so students couldn't, we tried to remove. I talk a lot about data. I talk a lot about research. Opinions matter, folks, but facts are facts. Research in North Carolina students alone at early colleges prove this. They have higher ACT scores, higher attendance rates, lower suspensions, lower dropouts. Higher enrollment in four-year universities are more likely to vote and less likely to be convicted of a crime during their late adolescence. Facts. I compiled a timeline. We had a special call board meeting not long ago, and I read the entire timeline. Dare County has been talking about an early college since two thousand and fifteen. They've been working toward having an early college actively since two thousand and eighteen. This is not new. I didn't walk in the door and create it. But we are really, really close to making it happen. As a matter of fact, they were really close to making it happen the fall before I took over in December. They already, they'd made the application. They put it in. The plan was to open the next year. Didn't happen because Superintendent left, and the decision was made to wait till the new Superintendent came in. I was hired. And we're standing here today. I can go through, do you all want to see the timeline? Shouldn't ask that question, because it's lengthy. I can go through the timeline if you think it's necessary? No?
Done it once.
Okay. This is just one slide from a presentation that was done to our Board of Education by Ms. Fallon on April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, laying out the timeline of us applying or submitting an application to the state for an early college. Let me do this. At a risk of... This is the timeline. This is the timeline of events that took place in Dare County that have gotten us to this point. Administrators have been involved. Students have been involved. The Board of Education has been involved. Parent groups have been involved. Teacher groups have been involved. This, oh, hold on, let me go back. This, October tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, they actually met with an architectural firm to talk about the Twiford Building. So before we got to a point that we were talking about COA, the Twiford Building was the location where they were going to open the early college in Dare County. And there was an architect, Walper Architecture, was contacted. They came out, looked at the building, did drawings of the renovations that would have to take place. I heard somebody the other day make some comment about the county manager saying the building was ready to go. The Twiford Building was ready to go. It was. We walked through it. We could have put paint on the walls. We could have dusted, and we could have opened the early college. Some of the things that were going to have to happen after we got there was we're going to have to have a cafeteria, which meant that the building was going to have to be renovated to add a cafeteria. And one of the buildings wasn't big enough to hold the entire early college. So when they went looking at the older building, the new architect determined that there just wasn't any way to save the building, and that's where the cafeteria was going to be. So it was going to have to be torn down and rebuilt to build a cafeteria. Also, before we could have started there, we were going to have to reinstall the technology that was going to be necessary to have a school in the building. Now, it was all wired, but there were no servers in there or computers in there, and I think at the time we estimated something like two hundred thousand dollars to just put the technology back in the building. So yes, the building was ready to be used, but it wasn't like we could walk in and start school. It was going to involve a lot of money to get it up to speed, particularly to house the entire early college. And that's the point at which it came down to seventeen million dollars to renovate a sixty-year-old building or nineteen to twenty-five million dollars to build one on a college campus where the majority of early colleges exist in North Carolina. And that just seemed like a no-brainer. Come on. There. Okay. No sense in going into all the details about each of these categories, but the application to open an early college is not like one page. Okay? It was twelve pages, and these are all the categories that you have to talk about in the application. We submitted an application to the state. There were eight schools that attended the orientation on the day that, after we submitted our application. DPI reviewed our application and came back and asked us, "Did you think about this?" And we were like, "Yeah, it's in this area right here." "Oh, okay, thank you." That was the only question we were asked. When our application was approved by DPI, they came back and told us that our application was so well-done that they wanted to use it as an exemplar to send to other districts and counties that were trying to open early colleges of this is how the application should look. It's not like everybody else's application. It's specific to Dare County. Our application was reviewed by DPI, NCDPI, then the State Board of Education, then the University of North Carolina System, then the Community College Board of Governors, and then approved by all of those entities and sent to the General Assembly. Now, here's what, the entities on the right side have to approve the application, and after they approve it, they send it to the General Assembly to say, "We approve the application," because at that point, the General Assembly can decide whether to provide additional, and that's a big word, funding for the early college. Because early colleges get additional funding as a cooperative innovative high school. We're going to receive about two hundred thousand dollars a year in additional funding, because we have an early college. But Dare County doesn't pay for all the positions and administrators in the early college. It's a public school. The state of North Carolina pays for that. So our principals, our teachers, all of that stuff comes from NCDPI, and we receive an additional two hundred thousand dollars if the General Assembly approves that. And that's part of the budget process, and you probably know where we are in the budget process in North Carolina right now, so we're just sort of waiting. I heard this at one point. Somebody said, "You're spending all this money on seven percent of our student population." Let's talk about that. At the time that this school was fully populated, if we take our October twenty-three population numbers, it will be larger than the Dare Learning Academy, Cape Hatters Elementary School, and First Flight Elementary School. And if you take the February numbers, it will also be larger than Cape Hatter Secondary School. So what we're talking about is a school that's somewhere in the three sixty to three ninety-three range in population. So about the same, or bigger than half of the schools in Dare County. Who can attend? Anyone. Anyone. Who can attend? Anyone. It is an application process. If you have completed eighth grade and live in Dare County, you can apply. That's it. How a student application is evaluated? There are several categories in an evaluation. The evaluation, the application is scored by a team of people. It's not one person sitting there going, "Yes, no, yes, no." It's a team of people. That team can involve teachers, administrators, and there are five categories on the application. There's a target student population. There's an interview process. And the interview, here's one thing that I've seen that people... Here's one thing that I've seen that people make a horrible mistake when they talk about early colleges. They think that it's all about recruiting college kids. And it's really not at all. This is not about your highest flyers. It can be.
This is not about the kids that are capable of doing it from the room. It can be. This is about finding kids that want to do it bad. That's, that's why I'm not, because it takes a huge commitment. Yep?
Can you hear me? Okay. I got it. All right. So you interview kids. What are you looking for in the interview? You're looking for kids that are willing to commit to doing something that they probably have never done or dreamed of. That's what you're looking for. It's not about finding kids that can already do it. See, that, that really is the difference between traditional education and an early college education. It's kids. You're not looking for kids that can walk in a classroom and already do it. You're looking for kids that are willing to walk into a classroom and learn to do it. And that's a really different way. Attendance and discipline data. Not what you think. This is not about if a kid misses a lot of school, they're not going to get to go to the Early College. It's not what it's about. This is about if a kid's missing a lot of school, why are they missing a lot of school? Are there things that are preventing them from coming to school? Are there things that we can do to help that student, support that student, to get them to school? Discipline data. Oh, that kid's been in trouble all the time, they're not going to go to the Early College, they won't take him. I, I, I have a friend of mine that's a superintendent. And I'll tell you a comment that he made. Because I kept telling him, it, it's not, it's not like that. We don't take kids that are perfectly, that, that don't do anything wrong. We don't take kids that don't miss school. Here's the kids we take. Well, that's impossible because look, look what they score, look how well they do, and they come to school all the time for you. That's exactly right. So a kid with a lot of, of discipline issues, the next question is why? Is the kid absolutely bored to death in a classroom so they're finding something to do? And if that means getting thrown out of class and sent to the principal's office, then they don't have to sit in class anymore. Discipline and attendance isn't about perfection. It may be the very reason the student gets in. Staff recommendations. They're going to get recommendations from teachers, from custodians, from cafeteria workers, from anybody that will write them a letter of recommendation of why they feel this child should go to early college. And then there's several responses that the child themselves have to write. But it, let me go back. This is not about eliminating candidates. It's about finding reasons to let them in. And that's a totally different way of looking at things. This is not barriers. This is removal of barriers. The one in the middle is the biggest barrier. Grades are not part of a student's application. Not going to take all the A kids. You don't even look at the grades until after the student is in. This is about kids. EC kids, five oh four kids, AIG kids. Just like you. That's right, just like you. Nothing, you remove barriers. Now, target student population. When early colleges was, were originally developed, they broke this out into five categories. Okay? Five cat, six categories. The six categories are, if you are the first-generation collegegoer in your family, then you're a good candidate for early college. Mom and dad didn't go to four-year school. You're a good candidate. Why? Because you're probably not being pushed at home to go to college. Or if you're being pushed at home, mom and dad really don't know how to push you because they never did. So they don't know how to encourage you or help you get there. English language learners. Students from low socioeconomic backgrounds. I want you to hear me say this. Minority students are not the only students in Dare County from low socioeconomic backgrounds. Students at risk of not graduating. Let's say a child got sick and missed three months of school because they were hospitalized. That's hard to come back from. Particularly if you have to keep checking out of school and go to doctor's appointments. Prime candidate. Minority students. And students who want an accelerated academic track. And typically what you're going to see is the kids that don't want to sit in high school and wait, they're ready to go do it now. And the kids that really, really want it, but they don't know who to ask and they don't know how to do it, and, and they probably aren't going to take an AP class in high school. They're probably, they may take an honors class, but not a lot of them. That's early college. That's who's there. Those are the kids that you see every day. Since the original set, DPI has reduced those, or actually combined those, they didn't reduce them, to three categories. First-generation collegegoers, students at risk of dropping out of high school, and students who would benefit from accelerated learning opportunity. I argue this. Who's left out of those categories? Which students would be eliminated by any of those categories? I, I don't know many students that are left out of those categories. That's why it's for everyone. Question. If a student goes to an early college, can they decide that early college isn't for them and they want to go back to their sending school? They sure can. But they can only do that at the end of the school year because you don't want a revolving door. So if a kid enrolls in the early college, it wasn't for them. They finish out the school year, they get their credits, they get to go back to their, to their sending school. In my experience, that was no more than four or five kids a year. And we were bringing in about seventy-five kids a class. Here's one of our disinformation statements. Will early college eliminate AP? No, it will not eliminate AP. What, what I said, this is not about eliminating anything. This is about providing additional options. It's a, it's not about undoing stuff for kids. It's about putting kids in a position where they can make decisions with more of a, a variety to make decisions on. But let's talk about AP. We just got our AP scores this week, so this is hot off the press, you're the first one to see it. Okay? Here's our percentages. Dare County AP, percentage of students receiving a three, four, or five. Let me explain that for everybody that's not in education. In order to have an opportunity to get college credit in an AP class, an advanced placement class, you have, out of, out of one, one through five, one, two, three, four, five, you have to score a three, four, or five to have an opportunity to get AP credit. If you score a three, four, or five, then there's a chance that you get AP credit. AP credit means you get college credit when you enroll in college. The catch is this. The college you enrolling gets to decide whether you get AP credit or not. Some colleges only take fives in certain classes. So if you scored a four, you don't get credit. Some colleges will take a three. Make sure you enroll in that college. It's up to the college whether they grant you credit for AP. And look at our percentages. Sixty percent of the students at Cape Patterson scored a three, four, or five. Forty-six percent at Manio High School. And seventy percent at First Flight High School. And let me tell you this. That's almost double our last five-year average in every one of those categories. People are working at it. The numbers aside, that's out of five. Cape Patterson's average is two point seven, Manio High School is two point four, and First Flight High School is three point two. That's our average score. But let's compare that to the performance of our dual-enroll students at COA this spring. Eighty-nine percent of the students at Cape Patterson High School who took a class at COA scored a C or better. Eighty-five percent of the students at Manio High School who took that, a class at COA scored a C or better. And ninety-one percent of the students at First Flight High School who took a class at COA scored a C or better. That means they have the college credit. When they go enroll in college and they scored a C or better on that class, they already have the credit. The college will not deny the credit because the University of North Carolina System has got a mutual agreement with the Community College System in North Carolina that says if a student scores a C or better at a community college, they keep that score. If a student finishes an associate's degree and enrolls in a college, a University of North Carolina System school, they have an associate's degree, they actually enrolled as a junior. They don't have to go back and redo that. Where will early colleges' teacher staff come from? Talk a little bit about this. Um, the state of North Carolina pays for teachers at the early college. Pays for administrators at the early college. And because it's an early college, will give us an additional two hundred thousand dollars a year. We're not planning to move people there or make people move there. I, I'll say this. When people find out how good it is, they're going to want to be there, but that's their choice, not mine. Can students already complete an associate's degree through dual enrollment? The answer to that question is absolutely yes. They can. The problem is, they're not. The ability to do that is there. But it's difficult to do. And the reason it's difficult to do is because you are at such a limited timeline. Come on. You're in such a limited timeline in, in traditional school to complete that associate's degree. Unless, if you're a ninth grader and you are AIG in both reading and math, then you're eligible, I don't know if you're ready, but you're eligible to start taking college classes. If, if you're AIG in both reading and math. There are some 10th grade students that can take some career and technical education classes at COA, but not academic classes. If you're dual- enrolled, you have to be in the 11th or 12th grade with a two-point-eight unweighted GPA and have a standardized test score in either reading and math in order to enroll in COA. Now, let me say something to you. That eliminates some kids. Because some kids don't have a two-point-eight. You're going to graduate from high school in four years whether you like it or not, so you've got two years to take all the COA classes you can take. And that's the difference. The difference between dual enrollment and early college is, in dual enrollment, you're taking classes. Remember what I said a while ago? We had thirteen kids that got either an associate's degree or a career certification from COA this year. And that's a record. That's four percent of our population. Four percent of our three hundred and twenty-eight graduates took advantage of that. Now, I know we have the Dare Guarantee. Mr. Chairman, don't hit me yet. But since I've been here, all I've heard people talk about is trying to get kids to take advantage of the Dare Guarantee. We talk about it every meeting. Kids not taking advantage of Dare Guarantee, we got two hundred fifty thousand dollars that we want kids. We, we started with graduates from Dare County schools and now we opened it up to anybody that wants to take classes in Dare County, basically, um, to, to use that Dare Guarantee. And they're not doing it. That's the problem. What if? We give them the ability to do that in school? What if we don't have to wait for them to graduate from high school to take advantage of that? And, and, and here's the thing. Folks, there are not a lot of our kids that are going to decide to stay here and wait a couple more years before they go to State of Carolina if that's what they want to do. It's just not going to happen. But if we can get them a two-year degree in high school before they grad, we let them graduate from high school with a high school diploma and an associate's degree or a career certification, then we don't have to make them stay here. In an early college, you enroll in ninth grade, if you have the ability as a student to take college classes, you can sign up for college classes. That's it. You have much more scheduling flexibility. You have a tremendous support, 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 a tremendous amount of support standing behind you. Typically, dual-enrolled kids, the way it's happened in the past, is they enroll, generally it's an, it's online. We haven't had a lot of kids go into COA, but we will. It's online, and they go sit down in a room somewhere in the school and they take a class at COA online. On their own. That's what happens. Sink or swim. That's the opposite of the early college. Somebody is going to be there to support them every step of the way. To offer them help and assistance every step of the way. Not because they went to find it, because that's the way it's designed. Students can choose at the early college to actually stay there for five years without penalty. If they're not done with their associate's degree and want to stay another year, they're welcome to do that. It doesn't hurt the graduation rate, it doesn't hurt the student at all. And then finally, like I said, this isn't about taking classes. This is about completion. This is about certifications. I heard this question a lot. So I, I put this slide in there, what's the difference? Early colleges provide tailored academic support to help students succeed in college-level coursework while still in high school. This includes assistance with time management, study skills, navigating increased rigor of college classes. The very thing that I hear teachers all the time say kids need to learn. These programs offer social support to help students adjust to the demands of college courses and develop the maturity needed for higher education. Early colleges provide extensive support in planning for after-high school, including help with college application, financial aid, selecting appropriate courses, and job application. We do that for avid. Students receive guidance in navigating the transition between high school and college environments, including understanding college systems and becoming involved in campus life. These programs help students develop essential skills like time management, self-advocacy, and study habits crucial to post-secondary success. We don't tell kids to go do their homework and study. We show them how. We show them what it means at college to do that. We show them the importance of doing that. You're teaching them to be successful. Not just do the content. Early colleges manage, manage the complexities of earning both high Early colleges manage, manage the complexities of earning both high school and college credits simultaneously. Enduring, enduring students stay, ensuring students stay on track for both diplomas. And that takes work, y'all. Everybody, every teacher in every class is like a guidance counselor at an early college. They all have to understand transcripts, they all have to look at what the student's four-year plan is. They're all involved in those conversations all the time. You don't let it just happen. These schools foster a strong college-oriented environment which can be particularly beneficial for first-generation college students. Can early college students participate in athletics? Okay, that was one of our initial, you know, you're gonna ruin athletics, you're taking all the athletes out, and then you're gonna change the conference designations. Yes, because we saw it as a barrier, we removed it. We want our kids to be able to play athletics. We don't want a kid to have to decide, I don't have to decide in the eighth grade whether I want to go to a college or whether I want to play football. It's not fair. Will bus transportation be provided for students who do not drive? Yes. From Hatters and First Flight and from Manial. How? Scheduling. You make it work. It's not a question of whether it will or not, it's a question of finding out how. If you've got a kid that lives in Hatters and wants to get to the early college, that's a long bus drive. If you've got a kid that lives in Rodanthe, it's about the same as Carraway. And we treat it like it's forever and a day away. It's really not, when you compare it to other locations. Um, the, the kids at, at Mad Mosquito Early College ride a bus for an hour and ten minutes to get to Little Washington to go to Bothell Community College. The ones at Nap ride a bus for forty minutes to get to Lisbon City. Happens all the time. These are some of the degrees, and I want to highlight these down here. This is another one. I forgot, I didn't put this one on the list. We need a technical school. We got one. Welding, HVAC, electrical, plumbing, auto mechanics. Uh, they're looking at health occupations. Um, COA is open to providing all of those career certifications. This isn't just about college. I, I, I know a handful of kids right now, and I, I talked to several of the guys, who are taking every single certification that COA offers. Because they want to graduate with all certifications. So when they graduate, they can decide which job they want to go get. And if they can't get one in plumbing, they can get one in HVAC. We got a technical school. Associates in arts or science in teacher preparation. Let's grow our own. Instead of worrying about teacher housing and having to build things to get teachers to come here, let's take our students who want to be teachers. Let's get them a two-year degree while they're here. Let them go to college for two years instead of four, and then come back and teach. And cut the time in half that it takes for teacher preparation. Because there's a chance that mom and dad still live here after they graduate from college, which means they have a place to live. And a job. Now, are they gonna stay there forever? No. Are, can people stay in teacher housing forever? No. But it's a start, and it's better than what we got. Potential benefits for students. Early college programs provide a more structured and supportive environment for college-level coursework compared to traditional dual enrollment. They offer tailored academic and social supports to help students navigate college-level material and transition to higher education. They don't just stick kids in a class and say sink or swim. Early colleges provide a more focused, college-oriented, oriented environment, greater instructional rigor, and support from instructors. These programs help students develop essential skills like time management, self-advocacy, study habits for crucial college. Research indicates that early colleges benefit all students equally regardless of gender, race, ethnicity, or family income. Early colleges typically have a team of y'all that we're all fighting against. Early colleges typically have smaller class sizes allowed for more individual support from instructors and staff. And early college students were significantly more likely to earn degrees in natural sciences, math, and computer science, and psychology compared to their peers. That's research-based. In North Carolina. Uh, if you want to look it up, SERVE, S-E-R-V-E. It's out of Greensboro. They do all the early college stuff. Capital, S-R-V-E. For free. For free. Some of you may have kids in college. Some of you understand what a year costs today in college. And what we're talking about is two years. For free. For the student. Eliminate student debt. Eliminate the drag of the parent. Cut that debt in half. Some of you may have student debt. We love to have it cut in half. So, this has been another huge hurdle, funding. Funding for school systems is a mind-boggling algorithm. It would be really nice. And, and, and typically, here, here's how the media, sorry, y'all. Here's how the media reports this. Uh, Dare County Schools received X amount of dollars. Okay, and it's this big number. And it's a total. And I'm telling you right now, that total means absolutely nothing. Because what matters is where the money came from and what you can use it for. And that's, that's what the budget determines. That big number can't be spent. And all the, you know, well, you should, you should take twenty-five million dollars and, and increase teacher supplements. Yes, you should. Can't do it. Love to. But you can't do that. So let's talk about it. In Dare County, and we're a little different because we receive like practically no funding. Okay, it's very small. In Dare County, there are three funding pools. Federal, state, and local. Federal, special programs, some grants, school nutrition, and student support. But all of those come with specifically defined usages. And they will audit you in a heartbeat. And you better have your, your i's dotted and your t's crossed. It can only be used for specific things. State funding. Special programs, supplies and materials, textbooks, um, some computer, um, uh, resources. Teacher and school leaders pay, state pays for those. It doesn't seem like it, but they do. Some supplements and education lottery funds. But they have defined usages. And you can't take money that the state gives you for this and use it for that. It's against the law. So the total figure doesn't matter. What matters, and they're, they're called budget codes, what matters is how much money is in that budget code that can be used for that specifically. Locally, Dare County, we are blessed. And I'm telling you that for having been in other places. That Dare County has something called a funding formula. Because it makes budgeting so much easier. In the springtime, Dare County takes our average daily membership, our ADM, our number of students. Typically, that's done in October, second month. The state gives us that number, we don't make it up. They take the number of students. There's a cost of living calculation that's in the funding formula. There's a square footage of Dare County Schools' facilities that are, that's in the funding formula. And then Dare County says, here's how much money you're gonna get. And that's probably the easiest part of the budget. There's no bickering and haggling and buying a used car. Now, this year, we were able to sit down with commissioners and say, please help us with teacher supplements. And they did. Now, it wasn't enough. But it's okay. Uh, sorry. It, it could have been more, but, but it's okay. It, and here's, here's what we did, sorry, y'all. Here's what, we did not want to go to the commissioners and say, will you give us five-hundred dollars a teacher? Because when you take a hundred-and-fifty dollars out of taxes of five-hundred dollars, and you divide the other three-hundred-and-fifty bucks up in twelve months, you're getting thirty-six dollars. We wanted our teachers to feel the impact of the supplement increase. And the commissioners listened. And I'm not beyond going back. All they can say is no. And I plan to, just let them know. Um, all they can say is no. We're trying to look out for our people. But we can't go take it out of all this other stuff and just make it happen. That's not how this works. The capital funding for capital improvement building can't be used for salaries. Um, there are some, the SROs and nurses are paid for by the county. School system doesn't pay for those. That's incredible. I, I had a friend of mine the other day say, um, you know, our county just decided to put an SRO in every elementary school. And they were thrilled. Like, what about your middle and high schools? Well, we're gonna, we'll get there. Every school here. The supplements, and there is some flexibility to that money. And we'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. So, the other thing the county is responsible for is our capital improvements. And that's building. Okay, that's maintenance and buildings and stuff like that. They get some money, some limited funding from lottery funds, sales tax, and from the state. And it goes into the capital improvement funds. Then the school system submits a plan to the county. And, and again, let me say that word again. Then the school system submits a plan. It's not a in stone document. It's, okay, here's what we would like to do. These are some of the projects that we're either currently working on or have worked on recently. MHS football locker room, that's supposed to have three more zeros. Um, the track and tennis courts at Manial High School are being redone right now. Uh, the new, there's a new field house, sorry. Uh, we already did the renovations on the old locker room. Um, the First Flight roof, um, y'all just missed that. Yesterday when I came in here, we had the tables all set up and they were redoing the, reshingling the roof up there and hammering and things were falling. Um, and it was like, huh! Um, so they, they finished that up. Um, chiller replacement, uh, First Flight fields, we're working on some of those now. Elementary school playgrounds, a couple of years ago, every elementary school got ninety-thousand dollars to upgrade their playgrounds. I think Kitty Hawk decided to use some of that as, as part of the, the playground, everybody's playground in their building. Um, the last two things on here were not in capital improvement because they were necessary at the time. They just happened. When we had to shut the chillers down at First Flight Elementary and Middle last year and we had mold in those buildings, I went back to the county manager and said, we need help. And they said, call who you need to call. We compared prices, we brought in a company, and in two weeks, we were back in our buildings. We budgeted a million dollars, I think we came in at eight-hundred-and-some-thousand, so we actually came in under budget. That wasn't budgeting. But when we needed it, we went and they said, here. The, the Kitty Hawk, I mean Cape Hatteras Elementary School playground, their, um, some of their playground equipment got to the point this year that we had to take it out because it was rusted. And we were able to move funds from one area to the other to put things back so they just didn't have a barren playground. Okay, those things happen. Just like they do in your house. Capital improvement planning. So this is what our capital improvement plan looks like. Now let me say this. See the green circle, twenty-four, twenty-five? That's what the commissioners approved. Okay? That, they said, we approve that you're spending this money for these things. If at any point this year something happens that we need, uh, let's see, HVAC riser repairs, a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. If we think that those aren't gonna break down on us tomorrow and we need that hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, because the commissioners have already approved that year, we've got to go back to them and say, we want to take that hundred-and-fifty that you approved for this and we want to move it over here, is that okay? For that year. Everything else, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, is a plan. It is notification. Here's what we're thinking. Here's what we're looking at. Here's what we'd like to do. So that we're not waiting until that year to say, oh, and by the way, we need thirty-million dollars. Okay? None, all of this is fluid. All of that is fluid. The four-hundred thousand is in this column for, for the field house? And if you notice up here, each year is basically two-million dollars. Two-six, two-one, two-one-nine, except twenty-six, twenty-seven. Why? Because we are aware that there's going to be a point in the near future where there will be the availability for the county to, oh, let me say this. We, I, I, people talk about twenty-five million dollars like, like Bobby Allen kicks at his desk. Okay? That's not how this works, y'all. Okay, I don't, I don't call Bobby up and, Bobby, you know, let's go build a building, uh, bring that money out of the bottom drawer. Um, or the top drawer. That's not how it works. How it works is, when is the county able to take out a loan and make payments on the loan? Not roll up the armored truck and throw the money out. Okay? It's not just sitting there. So when we're talking about twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, the county is going to have the ability in fiscal year twenty-eight, I think it's twenty-eight. Um, to accept more debt and make some more funds available. What I did in those years is say, you know? Here are some things that we might want to look at doing. That's what I put it in there for. So the county would know that. That's why there's twenty-nine million dollars in that year. We do not expect the county to put a twenty-nine-million-dollar budget that year. Those things are gonna be moved and spread out in this capital improvement plan because that's what you do in the capital improvement plan. It's planning. Just like you budget in your houses. Now, just because, let's say, Manial Middle School chiller replacement, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. What if it goes out next year? We're gonna have to replace it. What if we get to twenty-seven, twenty-eight and the chiller's working fine? And it looks like, it looks like it can last and there's no problems with it? Do we have to replace it then? If your car's running fine, are you just gonna go drive up and say, I'm buying a new car? Nobody does that. So all of this stuff can move. Some things can move this way and some things can move that way. Now here's what I've been told. I've been told that this is not an either-or. It's not either, you neither do the early college or you do all this stuff that you want to do on the capital improvement plan. It's not an either-or. It's a this and that. We not only can do the early college. And I, I've had people say, put it off for four years. You do realize that you're putting kids off when you do that, right? You're deciding that the kids over the next four years aren't going to get access to something that we could do. See, that's what it comes back to from there. There's the passion. It's about kids. It's about kids that don't have that voice. In addition to capital improvements, in the, the plan, in addition to this plan, we have a capital outlay budget. Those are things in our budget that we're spending extra money on that aren't in the capital improvement plan. It's total, what you're looking at on this page is about 600 and some thousand dollars roughly. Okay? But look at this. See these three things over here? Transportation, an activity bus, uh, multi-areas and maintenance, and school nutrition equipment? Of the 600 and some thousand dollars, that's 400,000 dollars worth of the stuff right there. So the rest of this stuff gets, is about 200,000 dollars, and gets divided out amount, across the county. Um, the soccer field bleachers, Manio High School, these bleachers on their soccer field. Um, administrative carpet area at First Flight Middle School, wrestling mats for Manio Middle School. Um, avid classroom virtual, commercial, commercial drive. First Flight High School washes laundry in a, in a home washer and dryer. How long's that one last? Um, Cape Hatteras Secondary School auditorium seating needs to be done. Needed to be done for a while. See, all of that is in addition to the capital improvement budget. None of this, none of this is going to cease to be done. We're doing it right now. We're not going to stop maintaining our buildings. I was shocked when I took over at the condition of some of the stuff in our buildings. And we have been working on that diligently. Ian? I, I, I'm on him all the time. What about this, buddy? Okay, I was down there, I saw this. Can you get somebody, call somebody and, and let's get this, I'm, I'm the broker window theorist. If you let the window stay broke, somebody's gonna break another window. Fix it. And that's what we've been doing. And that's what we're going to continue to do. We're not stopping any of it. And we can do all of it. So I guess the real argument here is priorities. You got priorities, I got priorities. My priorities are kids. My priorities are getting Dare County schools everything. Period. As quick as I can get it. For kids. Cape Hatteras Cafeteria, heard a lot about Cape Hatteras Cafeteria. I think, I, I, I think you went down and walked through cafeteria if I'm not mistaken. Um, so Cape Hatteras Cafeteria. There's nothing wrong with Cape Hatteras Cafeteria. The drains work just fine. It's not unsanitary. It's not gross. It looks very good, actually. It is the lowest portion of Cape Hatteras Secondary School. When they renovated everything else and raised it, they didn't do the cafeteria. Now, I'm from Dare County. I know what happens when we have a storm and things get flooded. The last time the cafeteria flooded was Hurricane Dorian. And that was a pretty bad one. We had seven feet on Okakoko Island. They have standing water in the parking lot all the time, it doesn't come in the building. We do general maintenance. We clean the drains. The biggest problem with their drains is they got grease in them. It's a kitchen. Commercial kitchen. Yeah, they got grease in the drains. We cleaned the drains out at the beginning of last year. We haven't had one problem with the drains at Cape Hatteras Elementary School this year. Building capacity. Hey, everybody's all excited about First Flight High School getting an auxiliary. I'm glad to hear that. So when we get there, nobody's gonna say, no, don't do that. There's a difference in building capacity and fire code. There's, there's actually, the, probably the best educational building capacity is probably the best term that I can give you because that's different. Because educational building capacity is based on state mandated class size, and that can change. Ask K3 teachers. State can just, okay, we're gonna reduce class size. And that means if you've got one more kid in that class, then the state says you can't have it, you gotta have another class. Maximum average square footage of the total number of instructional spaces that are available, and architectural design. That's what we're talking about when we say educational building capacity in reference to this building that you're sitting in right now. These are our educational building capacity numbers for the entire district. This really came to light when we started reviewing who was going to which school and where they were actually supposed to be. And when we started checking that, and we're telling people, no, they're over capacity, this is what we were talking about. Overcapacity, in, according to Dare County Board Policy, is 85%. So any of the things in red mean overcapacity. Now, let me go back and tell you something else about schools. And I know I'm telling you a lot of stuff, y'all, but I want everybody to understand this. It's not as cut and dried as this or that. When you're talking about schools, the last thing you want to do is build a building where you've got a bunch of classrooms that are sitting empty. That's wasteful. Okay, so you want a building that's at capacity. The board says 85% is capacity? I, I think 100% isn't capacity, but that, that's where we are. So right now, again, remember I said second month, October? In October, this building was at 113% capacity. In December, we graduated 40 kids out of this building. Which dropped them to 109% capacity. Now watch this. This is the population of First Flight Middle and First Flight High School over the, actually at the end of this current school year. Now, if you look right here in the 10th grade, and I know this because my daughter's in that, that class right there, there is a huge bump in student population in the 10th and 11th grade, which will next year be the 11th and 12th grade. It's 100 kids. But aside from the 11th and 12th grade, next year, the population goes back down to basically 200 kids. So two years from now, there will be 200, there will be 100 less kids in this building. Not because of anything anybody did, it's just a bump in population. What happens to the building capacity? It goes down below 100. Now, I can't imagine anybody's going to tell me to go build a new wing on this school knowing that two years from now, that capacity is going to drop by 100 kids. See, and those are the thing, none of this happens by chance, y'all. We are looking at every angle and information from 90,000 different directions to make these decisions. If 50 kids decide for First Flight High School to go to the early college, we'll be down at 90% capacity. I hope I haven't bored you to death. I hope, I, I hope I've been able to impart to you some of the massiveness of all of this calculation and, and direction. It's, it's not as easy as yes and no. It's where are we? Where do we want to go? And how do we want to get there? And those are the things that we're trying to do. But first and foremost, it is always going to be about kids. Every time. Mr. Chairman, if the boards would like to come back up on the stage?
Thank you, Mr. Bassnight. Now I'd like to turn the meeting over to our attorney, Ms. Hitch, for public comment.
Thank you. Board members, Board of Education members, you have in front of you, um, proposed procedures for running this public comment that, um, look very much like your board's normal public comment period. The only change that, um, we have proposed here is that we allowed the signups to continue. We didn't do the 15-minute cutoff before this meeting so that people who were coming for the public hearing would, would definitely be able to sign up. Um, if the board has reviewed those and would like to adopt those, if you adopt those, we can go ahead and move forward with that process for the public comment here.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we accept the, uh, early college public hearing procedures.
So we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Woody, second by Ms. Bothwell. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Who needs, motion carries. Thank you.
And these procedures were outside where the signup information was, but just to reiterate for those who are going to be speaking tonight, um, first, I just wanted to say, we moved the meeting here to First Flight because we anticipated there might be, uh, we didn't know how many people might come for this meeting, but it might have been bigger than the meeting room that we usually use could accommodate. So we moved it to First Flight as kind of a central location in the county for people to be able to come and that could accommodate more numbers. Um, the process for this, of course, the Dare County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public. The public, this public hearing is open for parents, students, and community members in accordance with the board policy. Obscene, vulgar, or profane statements, personal attacks, and insults that are disruptive to the orderly operation of the meeting will not be permitted. Um, the process for this hearing session will be as follows. Um, the topic available for discussion is the early college. Um, all individuals who want to speak have to sign up, uh, so that we can call you by name. Any person wishing to speak can sign up, but may speak once. Individuals will be called to speak in the order in which they signed up, I believe. I have three sheets, so I think I'm going in the order in which y'all signed up. Uh, once you're called to speak, please come up to the podium and identify yourself. And each person will get three minutes. Your unused time cannot be donated. And, um, then, if you'll look, there is a timer up at the podium for your benefit. I was gonna flash a folder at you, but they put a timer up there so that you'd be able to see how much time you have left to make sure that you can keep within your three minutes and say everything that you want to say. Um, so thank you for, in advance, for your cooperation with those procedures, and I'll go ahead and get started. I first had Kenny Bright.
Good evening, my name is Kenny Bright, I live in Avon. Um, I have two comments I'd like to make tonight. One is when, um, this initially started. Can you hear me now? Hey, there's a big difference.
Sorry Kenny, hold on, let me restart you since you, the mic wasn't on.
Yeah. Okay.
There you go, sir.
So, uh, two quick comments. Um, once, when all of this came to light and I heard that there was a lot of opposition to the early college, I started asking around to community members. I was in a restaurant in Manio, talking to a waitress and asked her her opinions of it. She was a high school girl. And, uh, she wasn't familiar with it, but a gentleman at the table beside said, are you talking about early college? And I said, yes, sir, I'd like to know your opinion. He said that he had to send his son from Rodanthie to change his address to his mother's place in Currituck so he could attend early college. He was a very big proponent of it, said his son came out with, uh, almost two degrees and is a very successful person now. So, um, I have talked to people who have had success with this program. And I will go ahead and say that I'm in favor of the program. The second thing I'd like to say is at the June 3rd Commissioners Meeting, um, some of the opposition stated that we were ignoring, and by we, the boards, were ignoring the health and safety of our students. I took that very personally. I took that as a gut punch. My son's been in school here K through ninth and is going into 10th grade. And I have never seen a health or a safety violation. And as some of you may know, I'm very experienced in the health and safety area of our county. Have a lot of experience. So I felt like that was, uh, an attack, I felt like it was unwarranted. And I just wanted to say that I have never seen any health or safety violations or anything be ignored for our students. Last thing, I support early college and I hope this program's successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bright, for your comments. Joe Tyson.
My name is Joseph Bell Tyson, I am the principal of First Flight High School. It is with great enthusiasm and optimism that I stand before you to discuss a vision that holds the potential to transform the future of education in Dare County. Today are we not just talking about a change, but we are talking about pioneering a movement that can set a new standard for academic excellence and opportunity. Imagine a place where our high school students can step into a world of higher learning while still enjoying the opportunity and support and guidance of their community. An early college in Dare County is more than just a school. It is a gateway to boundless opportunities where students can earn college credits, gain invaluable skills, and develop a passion for lifelong learning, all before they even graduate high school. Our county is known for its rich history, natural beauty, and strong sense of community. By establishing an early college, we can build on these strengths and provide our young scholars with the tools they need to thrive in increasingly complex, competitive world. This initiative is not just about academics, it is about nurturing well-rounded individuals who are prepared to lead, innovate, and contribute to the vibrant future of Dare County. This endeavor marks not just a small progress in education, but a significant stride towards a brighter and more prosperous future for both our students and community as a whole. This development is also in line with the Initiative, Innovative Education Initiatives Act, Senate Bill 656. Moreover, schools like Terrell County Schools, ECPPS County Schools, Camden County Schools, Currituck County Schools, Herford County Schools, and Hyde County Schools all have successfully implemented an early college program. North Carolina boasts over 134 cooperative innovative high schools. Believing strongly in providing our Dare County schools with the diverse opportunities that enable them to excel in their chosen career pathways. I will elaborate on why I think it is crucial for Dare County to offer this to our scholars. One of the most significant benefits of an early college is the reduction of financial barriers to higher education. College tuition costs can be significant burden on families. And by offering college credits at no cost during high school, we are making higher education more accessible and more affordable. This initiative can alleviate the financial strain on families, ensuring that every student, regardless of their economic background, has the chance to succeed. Moreover, the early colleges model fosters academic excellence and high expectations. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Tyson, for your input. Charles Parker.
Good evening, and thank you very much for that presentation, it was very good. Appreciate everything that was said there. But I have not seen some figures which should be important and discussed. If and when the building is completed, what are the recurring costs? Do we have a pro forma budget for actual annual costs so that the people can see the real cost of the whole system? How many new employees, teachers, administrators, support staff, and their yearly salaries, benefit costs, et cetera? What portion of that has to come from Dare County? The actual costs of maintaining the building, heating, cooling, electric, phones, internet, supplies, maintenance, et cetera, how much is that going to be? The actual transportation costs, more buses, more bus drivers if we can find them because they're shorthanded already? And the cost, the actual transportation of students to and from the schools at normal times, and transportation to schools at abnormal times, like when a team has early dismissal to attend away sports, kids have to get back at that timeframe? I'm sure there are more expenses to consider. Have you totaled all these costs, divided them by the prospective number of students, and what is that number justified? And when you do that, would you provide those to the people? The second point is, I'm going to do this off the cuff, when we talked about that this is not going to be a charter school, it's going to be a private school within our public school system. You're going to be choosing some eighth graders and their parents, and remember when we were parents of eighth graders, did we know what high school was going to be like? You're going to have a certain small percentage you're going to offer this opportunity to, but the rest of the parents of eighth graders coming in will not have that opportunity. And the best thing is, Steve was just showing how great our school system is and how the dual kids are doing fine and everything else, why don't we just make the whole school district an early college thing? If our kids are that good, we should do it for all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker, for your input. John Bone.
My name is John Bone, I live in Kitty Hawk, and I've lived in Dare County for 58 years, probably longer than most of you have been alive. First of all, I started out in Dare County as a public school teacher, started at Manio High School, and so education and the education of kids is very important to me. And I came here tonight to learn more about early college, and I have learned quite a bit, and after what I've seen and what I've heard, I am all for it, and I hope the boards will continue to move forward on this project. Thank you very much. And one personal, personal note, I talked to this young man right here, and he did not embarrass me tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your service to the school system, Mr. Bone. Clint Johnson.
Good evening, I'm Clint Johnson, a former high school principal and later a leadership coach with about 60 early college high schools in North Carolina, all over the state from Manio to Murphy. I'm presently a leadership coach with the North Carolina State, excuse me, Graduate Program in Education Administration. And I've been doing some work in Dare County, I'm seeing what's happening with the quest to get an early college. I'd like to share with you what I've seen as the strengths of the early colleges that I've been associated with through the nine years that I worked with them. They do a great job knowing students personally. They have an atmosphere and expectation that everyone cares about everyone else, as teachers and kids, and kids to teachers. The most important thing to me, though, is they have a really powerful teaching and learning going on in these early college high schools, where you see students reading, writing, thinking, and talking about the learning daily. This is something you see every day. All high school classes are taught on the honors level. Students usually take only a couple of college classes during the first two years that they're at the early college high school, and then most of, all of the classes are college classes normally, the third and fourth year and fifth year if needed. They have support systems set up for the students who are taking the college classes, and as Steve said, this is a huge difference between students taking dual enrollment and the college classes taken in the early college high schools. Students taking dual enrollment are kind of left on their own, very much supported in the early college high schools. The result is that early college high schools historically have the highest college GPAs of any group on the college campus. If you ask the colleges, they'll tell you that. I wish I had the benefit of my school, being able to collaborate with an early college high school when I was a high school principal, they weren't around in the 90s. I hope that you guys will give these high schools a chance to collaborate and learn from their powerful teaching and learning and their strong college emphasis. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Metzinger.
Good evening, I'm Jim Metzinger, school teacher, Manio High School. Been here for a little over 10 years, I've attended a few of these presentations and the five-on-five meeting, and the early college program sounds wonderful for the kids that could be a part of it. My question is, and it could just be, I don't have enough information, is why can we not embed that model in our current high schools? Is it not possible to have an early college program that has a Manio High School branch, and a First Flight High School branch, and a Cape Hatteras High School branch, so that way it can be housed within our current school buildings? Maybe it is possible, maybe it's not, I might just be not have the correct information. Mr. Bassnight alluded to, it's a matter of our priorities in terms of what's coming first and second, we're not picking either or, we're just looking at when we can do things. My question just is, is why is the early college the priority over other items that we could take care of first? Again, I think the early college program sounds great, I'm just curious as to why it became the first priority on our list versus some other needs that we have listed, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Metzinger, for your service to the school system and your input. Ada Handhavel. Aida Havel, I'm sorry, Ms. Havel. It won't happen for me again.
Good evening, my name is Aida Havel, I live in Salvo, and I'm running for Dare County Commissioner from Hatteras Island. First Superintendent Bassnight, that was a very interesting and informative presentation, and I want to thank you very much for it, even though you did call me out during it, but that's fine, no problem whatsoever. Because I am running for county commissioner, and because there has been some suggestion that the opposition to early college is political, I would like to make my position on early college as clear as I can possibly make it. One, I am not against the idea of early college. It is a good thing for students and parents to have options and choices, and early college is both creative and inclusive, two things I like. Two, I believe that early college was not opposed by anyone when it was originally either A, going to be housed in the old College of the Albemarle Building, the Twyford Campus, or B, was not going to be taking funds away from capital improvement projects that had already been delayed several years. I really love Mr. Metzinger's comment, who spoke just before me, why can this not be integrated into our current high schools instead of building a whole new building? I think that perhaps that's something that ought to be considered. Three, once it became clear that many separate capital improvement projects for our schools were going to be delayed for three years, while early college jumped to the front of the line, I became concerned, as did others. My concerns include the following. One, I believe the most recent survey data on early college is five years old from 2019, before the pandemic, and I think many things in education have changed. Two, I think it is fiscally irresponsible to build a $20 million building while not promptly taking care of what we already have. What message is that sending to our children? Three, the fact that early college will benefit at most, perhaps 200 students, 250 students over the next four years, when there are close to 5,000 students in our school system. Four, the possibility that early college is being pushed now as a way to get the full-time enrollment numbers up at College of the Albemarle, which has apparently not had the enrollment that was expected. And five, this is apparently being pushed forward without knowing if anybody wants it. There's apparently been no survey done of students and parents, as was done with the junior rotsee. I want to make clear that these concerns are in no way political. It may appear that they are, but I believe you will find that a substantial number of parents and voters of all affiliations have questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your input. Myra Ladbone.
I'm Myra Ladbone, I reside in Kitty Hawk. I'm a former Dare County teacher, and I've been a business owner for 35 years until I sold my company in 2018. First of all, I don't know how anyone who cares about Dare County or the children in Dare County can be opposed to this. If anything, as a takeaway from this meeting tonight, is please get your facts straight before you're out there saying negative things, and just as important for those that are in favor of it, know your facts in order to get accurate information out there. I've heard too about the money, we're taking money away from the schools that need to be done, and if I'm wrong, y'all can correct me. It's my understanding that they're not taking money away, that's been appropriated, and the money for the college is coming from the state. So I think we need to try to understand all of that. I'd like to thank you Superintendent Bassnight, and the Board of Education, and the county commissioners for all that you do for our students and for Dare County. Thank you.
Thank you for your service to the school system, Ms. Ladbone. Jamie Wagner.
Hello, my name is Jamie Wagner. I'd like to start with clarification, please. First of all, thank you for the presentation with all the information, but I would like clarification, please, speaking to, following up on her public comment as well. Where would speak the funding, the funding for this, and one of the primary sources being, coming from the North Carolina Education Lottery Funds? It was spoken about that the future capital improvement funds would, that are to be available again in 2028, would again need to come from the North Carolina Education Lottery Funds. In the meantime, as House and Senate are trying to come to a 2024 and 2025 biannual budget approval, that we are continuing to see school vouchers, millions of dollars, be approved down that portal, and so would that impact our future 2028 capital improvement fund if they are trying to utilize sources of funding from that lottery fund to distribute? To which I just want to point out, unfortunately, it's a numeric of $463 million that they are approving for or shooting for to get people off of the waitlist for school vouchers, and I would appreciate if any, I'm separate from early college, but if we can address this and how that's going to affect Dare County schools' funding in the future, and unfortunately, I want to point out that that House Bill HB 823 to eliminate the school choice opportunity waitlist, the last action taken was on 5/7/2024, and both of our North Carolina House of Representative Edward C. Goodwin and North Carolina House of Representative Keith Kidwell are voting to push forward this substantial amount of funding. I'm confused what we are codependent on to uphold a wonderful idea and opportunity for the Dare County School District like early college, but to focus on that resource of funding and what would happen there. Thank you.
Thank you for your input, Ms. Wagner. Dr. Sandra Slate.
I apologize because I have Parkinson's, so sometimes it's a little hard. I am Sandra Slate. I came from Southern Shores, we've lived up there now since 2001, but before that, we had a property on Hatteras Island from 1971, so I am very pro children on Dare County. I am concerned about, I'm also a former professor. I taught at the University of Delaware, the University of Illinois, and the University of South Carolina, chemistry. I'm interested in finding out how you are going to have such a small student body, the way I see it, and provide chemistry, physics, and so forth, advanced problems, advanced education for those people. And I'm also concerned, I have heard reports from my college friends, that people coming from a large number of the early college programs who then transfer to the regular university, a lot of times when the students come in, they presume that they have a good background, and so when they walk in the door, they put them in the advanced chemistry classes, and unfortunately, a lot of them don't have that good a background, and they don't do well, and they don't realize their background is a problem until about the first exam. And what this does is it lowers their grades, and it makes significant impact on their future lives. For instance, your scholarships, the advanced scholarships you might get for later on, and also medical school, that's another big one that I'm very aware of. So I want the students to really have a good background so that if they do go on to the other universities, that they really understand what they know and what they don't know. And I have one suggestion, if I had a child like that, I would contact the chemistry professor at say 101, Chemistry 101, and I'd ask him, "Could I see your exams from last semester?" And I would give it to my student, and I would have them take it essentially, so they could tell what they are really prepared for, so that they don't end up coming from a program that may not have as good a background and go into one where they need a better one. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Slate. Alan Creach.
Good evening, thank you.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Alan Creach from Kill Devil Hills. I have a 12-year-old daughter that would be a candidate for this program. I like the sounds of the program, the goals sound amazing, but to go with what Mr. Parker, Mr. Metzinger said, shouldn't that be the goal, and these available resources available to all the kids? If part of the success of the program is the additional support and resources they get, then that should be available to every kid. If you've got more counselors, a ratio of staff to student, then that ratio should be applied throughout the school system, not just this program. The data that was given was very positive, and it seems like those kids are going to be highly motivated, so they're gonna, obviously, their statistical averages are going to be higher than your general student population, and then when you remove those students from the other schools, are you statistically drawing down our existing schools? Like I said, I'm not for or against the actual college. It seems like we should be able to provide this program in our existing schools. It's going to reduce travel for the kids. I can't imagine athletics are available, but can you imagine going to a rigorous school, then having to make it back to practice? I know my coaches, if you're late, then you're running. So there's a lot to consider. I hope everybody thinks it over even more. I appreciate the time, appreciate the superintendent's presentation, and thank you.
Thank you for your input, Mr. Creach.
Hi. Leah Dixon, teacher at Manio High School, student who is in, going into seventh grade at Manio Middle School, so would definitely also be a kid that would enjoy this program. First of all, I'm not going to get through all of the questions that I have. The presentation was fantastic, the budget stuff, a lot of new information, that was great, I really appreciate it. It cleared a lot of things up, but then when that happens, a lot more questions arise. And so I think my main concern, and when I talk to teachers about our concerns, it's logistics. What are the logistics? How is this going to work day in and day out? A lot of the misconceptions that were in the presentation were not answered or addressed. I'm sure you have answers for those, I'd love to hear them, because it's not that I'm fully opposed to it either, but I, the logistics of it are difficult, and I think there's a lot of information that parents don't understand, that you only understand if you're a teacher and you're living it day in and day out. So with that, I'm going to try to get through as many as I can. You've got to have buy-in from us. I would love to have a question and answer section. I would love to get a group of teachers together, a committee, and us to go through this and really look at it, so that we can address the concerns if we want to move forward with it. My main concern as a parent, I had a teacher of my child when he was in preschool, and she said, stop microwaving your child. You're putting him in and you're cooking him too fast, and that is what we're doing. We are cooking these kids too fast, and it's breaking my heart. They're leaving not being able to write, they're leaving not having the skills, they're taking COA classes because they're easier than AP Lit and Lang and AP Chemistry. They're taking it because they want out, and they want the easy track. And I get that parents want to save money, and that's great, and I appreciate that, but what are we doing? We're losing rigor. We're losing the things that we do that really are making students prepared for college. So we are, I just, I guess I still don't understand how we're not going to lose teachers. Are parents aware that the students' college GPA starts as soon as they start taking COA classes? So if a ninth grader is taking a COA class, that's his college GPA. What if he fails that class? He just tanked it because he can't, you know, he doesn't have the social emotional ability to take a college-level course at, you know, 14. We have one COA counselor, the liaison, who's fantastic, but I know he's got 150 kids from, that he's dealing with. We don't have enough counselors to do it. We could really have so much more.
Sorry, Ms. Dixon, that was your time.
Can I email him?
Tiana Statthes.
Good evening, Dare County Board of Education and Dare County Commissioners. Being that Dare County is one of the last few with an early college, are we too late? Statistics have shown more than five or more early colleges are closing. Some, Carteret, Greenville, Abbott, South Warren. Columbia, North Carolina, early college only had four with degrees out of 38. North Carolina only had 4,000 out of 34,015 early college students graduate with a degree. Colleges want both AP and colleges on student applications. AP averages in Dare County are down due to not enough students are available to fill the classes. This has happened to my children numerous times. How will these classes thrive if we remove percents out of regular school to early college? Can dual enrollment be given support like early college? We have a fantastic COA program. Where is the extra help mentors and providers to get these students into these classes and given the same support students in early college will be receiving? Students have not been allowed to take multiple COA classes, more classes than one in a semester. Why can't we increase this as early college can take multiple? As taxpayers, parents, and staff, can we please be pulled to see if we would want this for our children? A capital improvement plan is great, and we understand that it's not a timeline, it's to continue on. However, the new building is eventually going to need to be added to a capital improvement plan as well. How will funding of this new building's repair and maintenance take place in addition to our other public schools? I appreciate you all for your time. Thanks.
Thank you for your input, Ms. Spencer. Jamie Whitley. And I believe Ms. Whitley is our last speaker.
She was taller than me. Okay, ready. All right. Hi, my name is Jamie Whitley. I'm speaking as an individual, not in my workplace. And I do agree that we should have the early college. Looking at kids that transfer in from early colleges, I looked at like stats from like UNC Chapel Hill. So for a freshman to go into UNC Chapel Hill, the acceptance rate is 17%, but for a transfer student, it's 47%. So if I got a child, which I do, she's five, and she's going into college, I'm like, hey, I can save money, get half the cost, she does two years, and then she goes in, and she has a 30% chance, increased chance of going into college, I said, that's wonderful. This program, I wish was around when I was in Dare County Schools. Being someone who was a minority, someone who was the first person to graduate college for my family, it is really helpful, and it gives kids hope to want to go to college, to want to learn a trade. We have so many different trades and stuff here, like people doing HVAC and people doing plumbing. Like I just redid my house, and I was trying to call plumbers, and they're like months and months out. So we can have people homegrown that are like doing plumbing and doing electric and doing HVAC, so that capital improvement plan you have, you have your students come back and do the schools. I said, that right there is saving costs, you invest it back into the schools, the kids are learning, everybody's happy. I said, that's what we want. We want everybody to be happy, we want everybody to be educated. Right now, looking at the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, the report card for 2022, 2023, there's just a recent one that's out, our students, for overall, for Dare County Schools, for math, they are not proficient by 39%. And then for Dare County Schools, for reading, they are not proficient by 42%. We can do better on these numbers, and having an early college might push the other schools to do better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes the sign, the sign-ups for the public input.
Thank you, Ms. Hitch. Now the floor is going to be open with Mr. Bastinite starting out with, if he has any
I just wanted to thank y'all for being here. I want to thank you for listening, and I want to thank you for the information that you shared. I would love to answer every single question you had. That's what I've been trying to do ever since we raised this discussion. I don't like talking at people, I would much rather have a conversation with people. It's so much easier if somebody will say, well, tell me about this, or how does that work? And if I don't know, I'm going to tell you, I don't know. That's the only way we move forward. Not trying to push anything on anybody, not trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. I would prefer that we're all doing this at the same time together and making the best decisions for our kids together, not in opposition to one another. I'm proud that we're Dare County Schools, and I'm proud of every one of you for supporting Dare County Schools, for supporting your children, and for working in Dare County Schools. You matter every day, and I really appreciate you giving up your time tonight to be here to talk to us.
Thank you, Mr. Bastinite. Mr. Peng, would you have any?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bastinite, thank you for the presentation tonight. You added some slides since two weeks ago, and that answered a lot more questions for, I think, everybody. I want to thank the Commissioners, Chairman Woodard, and the rest of the Commissioners for the funds that you have provided for our teachers, it's a big help. So thank you very, very much. Ms. Havel, I just want to address one thing, and this is not negative, it's just, I think it's fact. You stated that we're not taking care of our buildings now, we are taking care of our buildings now. Anytime Mr. Ian comes up with an issue, it's addressed immediately. So we are taking care of our buildings right now. But once again, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight, and the rigor, Superintendent Bastinite, correct me if I'm wrong, the rigor for early colleges honors level? So I think the rigor will be there for our early college kids at the honors level. But once again, thank you for everybody, thank you for the Commissioners for coming tonight. And once again, Mr. Superintendent, thank you for your presentation.
Mr. Brower, would you like to have any comments this evening?
Yeah, we've been talking about this for over a year now on the board, and I admit that I do have a background in finance and economics. Public finance, and especially educational finance, is kind of its own can of worms. It takes a while to understand that, but we are very limited in how funds can be used. We're not robbing Peter to pay Paul to get this done. And the more that we talk about this, and the more I learn about it, the more firmly convinced I am that this is the right thing for this school district, and this will change lives. It will have a major impact on generations. I appreciate everyone's comments, I understand there's a lot of questions. I certainly had a lot of questions going into this as well, I believe everyone did. But I'm really excited to get this thing going.
Ms. Bothwell?
Thanks, everyone, for coming this evening, taking time out of your busy schedules. I hope you all listened very carefully to what Mr. Bastinite had to say and got some answers to most of your questions. Early college isn't for every student, it just couldn't work to have, in my opinion, have an early college in each of the high schools. It's just not feasible. I don't know what else I really wanted to say. I just hope y'all paid attention and got some information out of it. Appreciate you coming, thank you.
Thanks again, I appreciate everybody coming out. Mr. Bastinite, I appreciate your presentation, again, outstanding. Commissioners, thanks for coming out and listening. I do have a couple of questions here that I think we may need to clarify a little bit. Some folks probably don't understand what the lottery funds can be used for. Can you explain that a little bit?
Bob, you, how about you, let Mr. Allen do that for us.
All right, so the lottery funds are a directed fund from the legislature. They can only be used for school capital improvements, that would include constructing buildings and things like that. They can be used for major repairs. They can't be used, I was going to try to catch Mr. Creach after the meeting, but the resources that we're using for this can only be used for this. We can't direct, redirect those resources into trying to implement the program into the school, because they're capital resources, and so you can't do that. And similarly, the funding for the teachers and the principals and all that in the early college are paid by the state. If you don't have the early college, you don't get those funds, and so there's not resources to then direct back in there from the pool of money that we're using to do this. And so these funds, these lottery funds, and there's a portion of the sales tax fund that are accumulated at the state in the name of Dare County, and they sit at the state level, and that fund grows over time and until we choose to use it. In other school systems like Wake County, their school system grows by 5,000 kids a year. They're building our whole school system every year, so they're constantly using those monies. Our school system has grown very slowly, and so our pot of money has grown as well. And since we're not building schools, it sits there until we use it to build something or to do something with it. And so when we were approached with the opportunity for the early college, then the money is there from the state level. Now, there's not $21 million sitting in an account, there's enough money there that we can borrow $21 million, and the funding that we get from the state will then pay the debt service on that funding over the life of that loan, and that's how the process is supposed to work, so that the state can then leverage that money throughout school systems throughout the state. So that's where the funding source comes from. Again, a lot of the things that we like to do, or it may need to be done in the schools, can't be done using those things. But bricks and mortars, things that you can touch and feel and build, those are the things that the funding from that fund can be used. I'll address one more question while I get to Mike, somebody talked about what if the legislature takes the money? There's a process that you go through, and at any point in the process, you can stop the process. So until we go out and actually borrow the money, we can stop. And so if the legislature has taken the fund, the lottery funding, to do something else with before we get to the point where we're borrowing the funds, then we don't go forward with it because we don't have the funds. Anything that you do where you're using state funding as a recurring funding source is subject to the whim of the legislature. Everything- Everything that we do in Dare County that is funded with state funds, the legislature can always take those funds back. So you run that risk whether you're buying a fire truck, or whether you're paying for a jail, or whether you're paying for a school, or whatever else. That has not happened typically. What happens is, once they commit and they approve, then those monies are designated, they come to us, and they don't retroactively go back and get them. If they take the funding before we get to the place where we're ready to start spending it, then we don't spend it. So that solves sort of the risk that you were concerned about.
Thank you. So looking at the capital improvement plan, you have all these maintenance issues. Those maintenance issues, you cannot use lottery funds for that?
It depends. If you needed to replace a roof?
Yes.
If you need to add on, I mean, we're going to use those same proceeds for the 2027 projects that you've got in the capital plan. So we've taken the priority that you've given us. We've run the funding models that tell us when we're going to get the money, when the tranches of money are going to come available. We've run the cost of borrowing those funds at any given time and how are we going to repay that. We've looked at the lottery proceeds and when we get them and how much they are. And so we plugged all that into the capital plan, and that's the timing in which it works. And so, yes, we can use it for some maintenance and will use it for some maintenance. It's planned to be used for some of that maintenance.
Okay, thank you. Again, I am 100% for early college, and I think it's a great opportunity for our students. I have two kids that went through UNC Chapel Hill and UNC Charlotte. I average $25,000 a year per student, so I'm about $140,000 in debt from my students going to college. It's 100% worth it for them. They've got great jobs, they're paying it off. But if we can alleviate that burden on these parents, I'm 100% for it. That's all I have.
Well, thank you. I'd like to thank everyone tonight for coming up this evening and giving us your public comments. We took those public comments to our heart. Ms. Dixon, as you asked, certainly you and everyone else out there tonight can email Mr. Bassnight, us board members. We'll get the information together and respond as quick as possible.
Not all at one time.
Not at one time. But I also want to point out that 20 years ago, in this facility, believe it or not, this is our newest facility, 20 years ago, the previous board was in the same predicament and situations that we're currently in right now. That current board worked with the previous commissioners' board to make decisions. Where were we going to spend the money? Where were we going to do it with Manio High School? 20 years ago, they were going to close Manio High School down then, and it's not closed down then, and it's not going to be closed down now. That board needed the Cape Hatters Elementary School, it was built. That board worked with them as a Manio Middle School, that facility was built. Manio Elementary School did not need to be renovated. There were a lot of issues that were shared from the public that it was proven we needed a new Manio Elementary School. It was also proven that Manio High School needed renovations. So with the tune of $175 to $180 million that the Board of Education 20 years ago, with that Board of Commissioners, worked together to make it happen. Was everybody happy? No. But at the end of the day, look how much it has provided for our community. It's made this community strong. It's made even Naxi Elementary, I apologize, and Kitty Hawk Elementary, it made us have community schools. And working together, we can do that. And I do feel that the early college is the right thing for the students in Dare County. Some of the other comments that was mentioned, I would love to have the opportunity to have professors and more guidance counselors at the high school level. But Mr. Bassnight shared a chart with y'all tonight, federal funds, state funds, and local funds. With that taking place, the funds are obligated where Mr. Bassnight and his staff can provide, as he said, about budget codes. And there's a limitation on where college professors being paid out of that fund cannot work with high school administration. So there's avenues that it's out there that we have to follow. We're following the federal, state, and government guidelines to provide education for our students. So when we look at that big picture, we don't want to be audited and come back up here to y'all six months from now and say, shame on y'all, y'all should know better. And that's why our job is to know better, and that's what we're trying to do. One of the questions also was about transportation. Transportation is provided by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction at no cost. It doesn't matter if you live in Hatters, you live in Stumpy Point, or you live in Duck. Now, the ride, it will matter. It's according to how long would you like for your student to ride a school bus? But the funding will not come out of local funds whatsoever. There is an allotment for transportation by the state North Carolina Department of Public Capital improvements. As you seen walking in here tonight, we're putting a million-dollar roof on this facility. We're putting $1.5 million in the chillers at Manio High School, and everything else that Mr. Bassnight shared with y'all tonight, I'm not going to repeat it. But we are not neglecting our current facilities. We're adding to the education for our students, and that's what we've got to look forward With that being said, do I have a motion on the floor? Any Commissioners like to say anything tonight?
Chairman, I'd just like to say thank you for agreeing to my recommendation to hold this public hearing. We did this a couple at our last meeting, and I really appreciate y'all agreeing to do that. Superintendent Bassnight, excellent presentation. Folks, we enjoy a tremendous relationship with the Board of Education. There was a time in Dare County, prior to this, prior to this current group of Board of Commissioners, that neither were fans of one another. And since the five-on-five, we have really, really worked closely together to do what is right for our kids. And I want to commend the Board of Education for taking every single step that they can to provide an education for our kids. And once again, thank you for this presentation, and thank you for holding this meeting this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Wood. Mr. Ross?
I guess my reaching for the microphone was a signal.
Yes, sir.
Superintendent Bassnight, that was an extraordinary presentation, and I want to really thank you for expanding on some of the earlier slides and providing a detailed explanation of the difference between an AP course or dual enrollment and the extraordinary benefit support enhancement, enrichment to the 350 to 375, I'll say, when we're fully engaged or fully enrolled with early college, and what that group of students can obtain, achieve, benefit from. I thought that was extraordinary. I have frankly thought about, geez, what is different? AP, that's one thing. How about dual enrollment? Why is that different? I've heard the questions as well, and those slides were extremely helpful, so thank you. That was extremely illustrative and very, very helpful. And number two, as I can listen to all the public comments, I continue to hear sort of a similar refrain. I don't oppose early college, but what about? Well, what I heard from your presentation, as well as some of the other speakers, Principal, thank you, sir, I was pretty comfortable with the answers to what about? In terms of, have we thought of that? Have other early college programs, the cooperative innovative high schools, as they are officially referred to in, I guess, North Carolina state vernacular? And I am, quite honestly, very comfortable with what I saw and what I heard, and I just want to express my appreciation for holding this meeting and for the thoroughness of your presentation. So thanks.
Mr. House?
Mr. Bassnight, excellent presentation. One of the things that I took away from it was my own personal endeavors when I was in high school. When I was in high school, in my junior and senior year, you could have said I was dual enrolled, even though back then there was no such thing. But I was taking my high school classes during the day, I was taking my firefighter and paramedic classes at night. When I graduated high school, within two weeks after my high school graduation, I sat for my state certification for paramedic exam. So I understand what this program can do instead of trying to do an enrollment situation like I did, where I was in school all day plus all night, and then trying to study while I was sleeping. So, you know, I understand the problems that I went through, and this program would have been excellent if it was available when I was in high school. And I can see where this can really benefit a lot of students here in Dare County. And I know that the school board is, every member that I've talked to, anytime I've talked to you, including Mr. Bassnight as well, the very first thing that any one of these people, when I speak to them, says it's about the kids. And I totally agree with that. And when they bring something to us as a board, we have that same commitment. We want to see our students here in Dare County, our youth here in Dare County, excel and succeed because our children are our future. And yes, things are getting fast-tracked, and sometimes a little bit faster than what I would like to see. But that's today's society, and that's what we're living in, and that's what we're moving into. And that's just the way it's evolved, and I'm glad to see that the school board is trying to keep up that evolution. So thank you very much, and thank you all for coming, too. It's great to hear from the public, so that we can make a proper decision on what's best for everyone. Thank you.
Any other Commissioners like to speak tonight? With that being said, our meeting, I'll be asking for a motion to adjourn the meeting tonight. Motion by Ms. Bothwell to second. Second by Mr. Payne. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any ayes, motion adjourned.